Welcome to Congressman Rob Woodall's telephone town hall and thank you for standing by. At this time, all participants are in listen-only mode. To ask a question during the Q and A session, press star one. In an effort to accommodate as many callers' questions as possible, we ask that you limit your questions and comments to sixty seconds. Those callers who exceed the sixty-second mark will be muted. Additionally, this call hosts families from around the district and we ask that callers keep their comments family-friendly. Please know, this call is being recorded, so if you need to hang up early, the call will be available at a later date. Now I will turn the call over to Congressman Woodall. You may begin.
Well, good evening. I should appreciate everybody joining me tonight. This is the very first town hall meeting over the telephone that I've hosted in my very short tenure. We've done a number of in-person town halls, which I always enjoy, but I've talked to a lot of folks who say they just can't get out to those for a variety of reasons, and so I want to make sure that we have some other opportunities for folks to get involved and have some of that give and take. What has this call on my mind tonight and why I so appreciate you all joining me is the budget. Every time you open up the newspaper, you see something about the numbers coming out of Washington DC, but we have so many different things going on in Washington DC. When I end up talking to folks about what their desires are, what they think the right direction to go is, I often hear people confusing a number of the different things that we have going on and thinking they're the same thing. So I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes here early to talk about the four different things that we have on our plate in Washington and then get right into some of the questions and the comments that you all might have. There is a lot that we argue about in terms of policy, what the right direction is to go, but there's even more that we argue about in terms of strategy. We know where we're going, but what's the best way to get there? And so, as we get into some of these budget debates, we're going to have debates both on policy and on strategy. The four things that we have going on right now, we have last year's annual budget. That's what we end up seeing as this continuing resolution that keeps coming up over and over again. That's a bill that should have been passed last year, but they couldn't get agreement amongst themselves last year, so it got dumped over into this year. And all it's going to do at this stage of the game is fund the government from today through the end of September, what is fiscal year 2011. So these continuing resolutions that we keep dealing with, that's the 2011 annual budget. You're beginning to see conversation about the 2012 annual budget. That's the second thing that we talk about. That funds the government from October 1st of this year through September of next year. And had the Congress last year gotten the job done, we wouldn't be focused on last year at all and what would happen during, in this time of the year, the March, April, May time, is we'd be focused exclusively on trying to get the 2012 budget passed. And so that process is beginning and you'll hear about that. You're also hearing about the debt limit. The debt limit has nothing to do with the annual appropriations bills going forward, but it's a reflection of how much we've spent going backwards. We're expected to hit that statutory cap, the debt limit is the statutory cap on how much money the federal government's allowed to borrow. We're expected to hit that cap sometime between early April and early June. And it has absolutely nothing to do with decisions we've made this Congress about how to spend going forward, but it's just the credit card that has been run up in past Congresses. And so we've got to make that decision. What do we do when we reach that limit and where do we go from there? So the debt limit is the third big budget item that's on our plate. And the final budget item is arguably the one that matters most. It's the biggest numbers that we deal with and it's the ten-year budget that Congress passes. Congress passes a ten-year budget, the President suggests a ten-year budget, and then folks get together and try to agree on something between the House and the Senate about what to do going forward. It was back in February that President Obama introduced his ten-year budget. And he was attacked from the left as saying he did too much, and certainly my criticism was that he didn't do nearly enough. And so that's the challenge that he faces. We are now getting ready to introduce a congressional budget in April, and that's one of the things I was hoping you all would give me some guidance and feedback on tonight. If you look at the President's ten-year budget, he expects to run up about seven trillion more dollars in debt. We have about fourteen trillion in debt right now. He anticipates running up another seven, increasing that by fifty percent over the next ten years. He anticipates taxes, which traditionally taxes in this country are about eighteen percent of GDP. Right now, they're at a historical low level. They're down about fourteen percent of GDP. The President anticipates running them up to a historically high level of about twenty-two percent of GDP. So he's got a big tax component in his budget. He also has a big spending component in his budget. In this time where we think we don't have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem in Washington, he still has some spending priorities that he wants to focus on, and he's included those in his budget. What he never does in his budget is tackle what I'll call the big three. He doesn't tackle any mandatory spending issues. In fact, he tries to move more things into the mandatory spending category. Let me talk just a second about what that is. I know I've heard from a lot of folks who are frustrated that we're spending so much time in Washington arguing about the little things, which in Washington parlance, the little things are things like the six billion dollars that the C.R. cut. Now, it says something about how spending is out of control, that six billion dollars is suddenly small money. Six billion dollars is about a third of the budget of the great state of Georgia, but in Washington, they just consider it pocket change, and that leads to a lot of really bad decisions coming out of there. But when we do these annual appropriations bills, the law only allows us to deal with what's called the discretionary part of the budget. There are two parts of the budget, two parts of annual spending, discretionary and mandatory. Discretionary are those things we make decisions about. Should we fund transportation? Should we build a bridge? Should we not? Should we get involved in this education issue? Should we not? Mandatory spending are things that happen automatically if you meet the criteria. If you turn sixty-five and you show up for Medicare benefits, you're going to get them. Congress doesn't have to decide you get them that year, you get them automatically. If you go and apply for food stamps and you meet the income criteria, you're going to get those food stamps automatically. We don't go and look to see if there's enough money to pay for them. We don't go and decide whether or not we're going to fund that. You get it automatically. That's what we call mandatory spending. It's true of Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, number of veterans' benefit programs and so on and so on. That's where the big money is, in the budget. If you look at what happens over time, and there's some great charts about this, it's tough to share those on the telephone, but the big drivers of our debt going forward are healthcare costs, primarily Medicare costs. States share Medicaid costs with the federal government. The federal government picks up all of the Medicare costs. So it's primarily Medicare costs that drive the federal model, and the reason that is is because particularly after the passage of Obamacare last year, when they worked to abolish the entire Medicare Advantage program, which tried to allow Medicare beneficiaries to get into some new and different healthcare models, Medicare is the exact same healthcare model it was back in nineteen sixty-five, which is that fee-for-service, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, eighty-twenty split with co-pays model. And that was a wonderful model in nineteen sixty-five, but we've come a long way since then. What we're working on in the Budget Committee right now is offering an alternative to the President's ten-year budget proposal. And we want to get to balance. You may remember, as I do, back in the first George Bush days, even the second George Bush days, certainly the Clinton days, if someone offered to get the budget to balance over ten years, we thought they were weak, didn't think they were working hard enough, wondered why they didn't take it seriously and get it done in two or three years. We are so far out of whack today, and we've just gotten that way over the past three years. We've moved from having a three-hundred-billion-dollar annual deficit to a one-point-five-trillion-dollar annual deficit. It got five times worse on a year-over-year basis just over the past three years. It is a real, it is a real big lift to get to a balanced budget over ten years. And candidly, I don't know if we're going to be able to do it. It's going to depend on the American people and how much shared pain and sacrifice folks are willing to get involved in. And I'll use this as an example and then we'll go straight to questions. You hear people say a lot, and they say it from the heart, that when we talk about changing the entitlement programs, we are not going to change the program for people who are aged fifty-five or over. Now, I'm a big believer that you can't pull the rug out from under people that you've made promises to. Poverty isn't about how much money you have in your pocket today, it's about how many choices you get to make about your life tomorrow. And if you've already retired, you're run out of those choices. The government made promises to you, it needs to come through and keep those commitments. But if we say, "We're not going to change the rules for anybody over age fifty-five," that's exactly what Speaker of the House John Boehner has said, "that we're going to work with my generation and those younger to renegotiate the promises of the federal government," you have to understand that we've then grandfathered the entire baby boom generation, right? The first of the baby boomers were retiring last year, those born in nineteen forty-five were retiring in two thousand and ten. Now, ten years from now, it's going to have everybody born between nineteen forty-five and nineteen fifty-five in the group of people that we're not going to change the plan for. If you do that, you don't have any other triggers that you can pull. Since the biggest part of the budget are these big entitlement programs, if you grandfather everybody into those entitlement programs over the next ten years, it's really hard to cut costs over the next ten years because you're only left with that very small part of the pie that is discretionary spending. And to put that in perspective, about sixty percent of the budget is mandatory spending and about forty percent is this discretionary spending that we have some annual control over. So that's where we are. We're going to be, we have been working and will continue to work in the Budget Committee each and every day to try to put together a proposal that will make you proud, that will do the kind of heavy lifting that I believe you sent me to Washington to do for you, that will make the kind of tough decisions that you want to be made. And I hope that you'll give me some feedback on what you're hearing and tell me what it is that you need a little bit of clarity on, and we'll get together again certainly before the budget is released. But it's going to require a team effort to get this done. It's going to require us all to be on board and pushing in the same direction, because if there were easy decisions to be made, they've been made already. The only ones that are left for you and me to make are the hard decisions that are going to be painful today, but are going to reap huge, huge benefits for our economy and for future generations tomorrow. And with that, like I said, I thank you again for joining me tonight, and let's go to the first question.
Our first question is from Jeanette Brunz. Your line is open.
Hi, Jeanette. Jeanette, are you with us this evening?
No. Your opinion on the comparative effectiveness research, a stimulus-funded program? I guess I wanted to know if you were aware that a similar program exists in the Washington state known as the Health Technology Assessment Program, and they are currently debating the need for glucose monitoring for children under eighteen. The Board claims that the effectiveness and optimal frequency of self-monitoring of blood glucose in patients is controversial. They have obviously not raised a diabetic child. I have. So at what point do we decide that government and not doctors should decide the type of care patients receive? Do you agree with this approach?
Jeanette, you've hit the nail right on the head. Whenever we end up providing a government benefit, we face exactly this choice. Whatever the government benefit is that I'm working on in Washington DC, there are going to be taxpayers on one hand who want to pay less for that benefit because we're paying for it out of their pockets. And then there are going to be people who receive the benefit, on the other hand, who want it to be the maximum benefit that they can get. So I absolutely support working with each and every one of these federal healthcare programs to try to make sure that they're making the best decisions that they can. I do not support the ability of a comparative effectiveness panel to make decisions for us. The solution for me, and I hope some of you will agree with me about it, and we'll be able to talk about it more certainly in the future, is putting these healthcare decisions and the dollars associated with them back into your pockets and your control. It's outrageous that as Medicare and Medicaid beneficiaries, folks have to come and beg their congressmen to keep their benefits in those areas that they need them most. Because if the dollars were yours, if you were making your own healthcare choices, you would put the benefits in place where you need them most. Do we need the information out there that these comparative effectiveness panels provide? I think the answer is yes. It's incredibly difficult to get good healthcare information. My doctor recommended to me that I go get a CAT scan on my heart. Well, I've been calling around and I can't get anybody to tell me what the actual price of a CAT scan is, because I want to go to the cheapest one I can find. But folks, they don't want to talk about their prices, they don't want to talk about what my insurance company, Aetna, you know, what their discounted negotiated rate is. It's incredibly difficult for me as someone who has access to lots of information and who loves to shop around for prices, even I can't find the information that I need to make those decisions well. So we do need to get more information out there, but at the end of the day, healthcare decisions have to be between patients and doctors. Patients and doctors, the only place healthcare decisions can lie, and I believe if we move in that direction, that we will see a cost savings as well. The fact that there are third-party intermediaries in each and every one of our healthcare decisions not only drain dollars from the system, but I think causes each to make decisions that we would not have made otherwise had we been left that decision to us and our doctors. Let's get to that next question.
Our next question comes from Isaac Reed. Your line is open.
The Democratic Party has shown in Wisconsin, as well as Indiana, Ohio, and some other states, that they are looking after the middleman, the common people. What do you think that the Republican Party is doing to prove to us that they're looking at our best interest?
Isaac, I think you hit the nail right on the head too, and you said it in two parts. One, you said looking out for your best interests, and the other time you said provide for the middle-class families, working-class families. The Republican Party is not doing anything to provide anything except freedom. And that's important, and that's why it's so tough for Republicans to get their messaging right. Because what my message is over and over and over again is, count on me to protect your freedom so that you can make the very best choices you can about your life. It is absolutely true that the Democratic Party wants to take care of middle-class America. And by taking care of them, that means making decisions on their behalf. I'll give you an example. My healthcare plan was abolished under Obamacare. I had a medical savings account plan because it was the cheapest plan I could find, and I'm a thrifty shopper, and the President's bill, it was actually Nancy Pelosi's bill, but the Obamacare legislation said, "No, I'm sorry, Rob. Your plan doesn't provide you with enough. And if you were smarter, you'd get a plan that provided you with more free stuff." Now, you have to pay extra for more free stuff, but you'd have more stuff. So my plan, which was very cheap and that I liked a lot, is now gone, and I now have a more expensive plan that provides me with things that I don't want or need. Absolutely, the Democrats are going to work harder to take care of America and make decisions for them. I'm going to work hard, and Republicans are going to work hard, to bring freedom back to America so folks will make decisions for themselves. I cannot, I just can't, and government can't, make decisions that will make everybody in America wealthy. We can absolutely make decisions in Washington that will make everybody in America poor. And I'm concerned that that's the direction we're headed with some of these policies. For me, freedom will always be paramount, because I know if we leave those decisions to you, Isaac, you will always make better decisions for yourself than I'll be able to make on your behalf. Let's get to the next question.
Bill Thompson, your line is open.
Bill, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a quick comment and then a question. First, I certainly agree with moving toward a balanced budget and containing costs and cutting where we can, including the Defense Department, which I think is terribly bloated. But I just don't think it's feasible to balance the budget with cuts alone. I think you've got to also increase income and place a fair tax on the wealthiest two percent and closing corporate loopholes that allow huge corporations like Exxon to pay no taxes. For example, Google earned eleven billion dollars last year overseas and paid four-point-two percent in taxes. So I think a fair tax on the wealthy and those who can chip in a little more has to be part of the budget picture.
Bill, I absolutely agree with you that you can't do it on spending cuts alone. Now, we may disagree on how it is we get to that taxation place. Right now, tax revenue in this country is about fourteen and a half percent of GDP. It's usually up around eighteen percent, but the economy's in turmoil and folks aren't making any money. And if they're not making any money, they can't send in any money. And that has brought revenues down and that's exacerbated our annual budget deficits. We have to get the economy moving in a way that brings more taxpayers back to the roles. Now, you talk about raising taxes. I'll tell you, I'm not a fan of class warfare. You know, the only people that have ever given me a job in my life are rich people. I've never had a poor man offer me a job. And the reason is because I've been a poor man and I didn't have a job to offer. Only folks with resources and ideas are out there providing the jobs. So why, when we have record-high unemployment rates, we'd want to raise taxes on those folks who are providing the jobs? That's confusing to me. I want to make sure that we're focused on getting those jobs up and going. That said, I agree with you one hundred percent about corporate loopholes. You know, I've introduced HR-25, the fair tax, and that is the only bill in Congress that abolishes every single corporate loophole in the entire income tax system. Every single giveaway, every lobbyist-funded special exception in favor, every single one of them. Because it abolishes corporate income taxes altogether. I don't believe that corporations pay taxes. There's no secret drawer where they can collect the money to pay taxes. They have to get it either out of the price of their product, which you and I pay when we're consumers, out of their employees' wages, which their employees are paying, or out of their stockholders, which, again, the economy is paying. But at the end of the day, it's going to be one of us, one of us individuals, that pays every nickel in corporate taxes. I want us to get corporate taxes as low as we possibly can in this country. We have the highest corporate tax rates in the world, which means businesses don't want to be here. They don't want to provide jobs here because they're going to get taxed here ways they wouldn't be taxed elsewhere. Before Chrysler Daimler, or before Chrysler became Daimler Chrysler, it came to Congress and testified in front of the Tax Writing Committee and said, "We want to stay in Detroit, but taxes are so high here, if you don't make changes, we're going to have to move to Germany." And Congress said, "Forget it, we're not going to make any changes." And so Chrysler became Daimler Chrysler and moved their headquarters from Detroit to Stuttgart. We have to keep those American businesses here and we have to attract new businesses to our shores. The way to do that is with the lowest corporate tax rate that we can get to make sure that folks want to come here. And to be clear, corporate taxes provide about one out of every ten dollars in federal revenue. You and I, again, we pay the taxes. We pay the income taxes and we pay the payroll taxes. The corporate tax costs as much to comply with as it does remit to the federal government. It's a huge drain on our economy, not to mention it raises all of those fairness issues that you raised, and we absolutely have to deal with those. And finally, Bill, to your Defense Department point, I agree with you. Nothing can escape scrutiny as we're making these decisions. You don't get a free pass just because you're a program that we like. Everybody has to be a part of the solution. I have already voted to make cuts in the Defense Department, and I will vote again in the future to make cuts in the Defense Department. Now, are there smart cuts and dumb cuts? Yes, there are, and I'm trying to make sure we make the smartest cuts that we can, but we all have to be participants. Every line item in the federal budget needs to be a participant in getting this country back on track, and we as taxpayers will be participants too as the economy starts to grow again. Operator, let's get to the next question.
David Smith, your line is open.
Congressman Woodall.
Hi, David.
Hey, how are you tonight?
Fantastic.
You've touched on one point that I had a question about, and one of it is the fair tax. And I've got one other concern of mine. Fair tax, how soon do you think, if any timeframe is available, that we would have that? Because I certainly support it. I believe everybody in this country should be paying their fair taxes. I'd rather be taxed on what I spend and not taxed on what I make. The other thing that I have a concern about is, this morning I had to, like everybody else, stop and get gas at my local QuickTrip and paying thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents a gallon. When I came home this afternoon, it was three forty-five. How soon, or is there any movement in Washington, other than the Pickens Plan, to get us off of foreign oil? And the reason I say this, I spent a year in Saudi Arabia from seventy-three to seventy-four. I'm a veteran. And we're sending a lot of money over there to fund a lot of folks with Cadillacs and Mercedes that really I don't believe have our best interests at hand.
Yeah. I think you're absolutely right. Let me take the energy question first because you finished with that one. You know, we developed the Department of Energy. President Jimmy Carter, our own Georgia son, developed the Department of Energy for the sole purpose of eliminating our dependence as Americans on foreign oil. And we didn't get that done. It's been thirty years and we hadn't gotten that done. And it's not that we can't get it done, it's that we don't have the political will to get it done. Do you remember back in nineteen ninety-six, we had this debate with President Clinton? And President Clinton, we were talking about drilling and trying to get more American resources into the market. And the President said in nineteen ninety-six, "It'll take ten years to get that oil out of the ground. It's not even worth talking about that because we need solutions today." Well, here we are fifteen years later and we still haven't gotten that done. Have you followed the plight of Seahawk Drilling? Seahawk is a shallow-water driller. They and their parent company, another American drilling company, filed for bankruptcy in February because we can't get permits through the EPA and through the Interior Department to do drilling. So we have American drillers, American-owned companies with American labor, ready to drill for American oil to reduce American energy prices, and they're going out of business during a time of record oil prices because the government won't give them the permit that they need to drill. I say to my friends who are on the environmental side of the fancy-themselves environmentalists, as a Southerner, I take a backseat to no one on environmental issues. We are out there hunting and fishing and hiking and biking and playing in ways that the rest of the nation can't because we've got such a wonderful climate and such wonderful God-given resources here in our part of the world. But there is not a nation on the planet that has a lousy economy and a successful environmental program, not one. And what this administration is doing is crippling our economy in the name of tipping its hat to the environmental lobby. And it is a lose-lose. We need win-wins to get ourselves out of this economic collapse. We need win-wins to get... We need win-wins to get ourselves to be non-dependent on foreign oil. We have more energy resources in America than we can consume over hundreds of years. We only need the political will to implement those. Anwar is the easiest and fastest location to access, as it's already close to a pipeline in Alaska. We can make those decisions. We need the political will to make those decisions. We have a Drill Here, Drill Now bill that is coming back through Congress. I have no expectation that the President's going to sign it. I can only hope that President, or that Harry Reid in the Senate is going to move it. But I'm absolutely certain it's going to become an issue in the next presidential campaign, because this is a national security issue and an economics issue that we have distinct disagreements about in the two political parties. Now, that takes us to Fair Tax. The realistic timeframe for the Fair Tax is 2013. We need a presidential candidate who is running on the Fair Tax, who believes in the Fair Tax, to win on the Fair Tax issue and lead from that bully pulpit in Washington to make it happen. Congress has an incredibly strong support for the Fair Tax. We added two more cosponsors this month, including a member of the House Ways and Means Committee, which is the committee that writes all tax legislation. We are going to have more support in the House of Representatives than we've ever had before, and we already have five United States Senators on board this cycle. But a national issue like this, that's so big, even though it's the grassroots in America that's actually leading on this issue, we need the grassroots to lead the President in the same way that they're leading the Congress. And if you look at the success that the grassroots movement has had with Congress, I promise you they can have that same success with a presidential nominee. In fact, Mike Huckabee would say that the Fair Tax was the reason he won Iowa last year, that it was folks who understood the Fair Tax and believed in the Fair Tax, who came out and participated in the Iowa caucuses and got him started on his series of presidential victories last time around. I think we will have not one, but two or three folks on the Republican side of the aisle run on the Fair Tax platform this time. Of course, last cycle, we had a Democrat, a former United States Senator, run on the Democratic side of the aisle on the Fair Tax platform. I don't expect any Democrats will challenge President Obama here as he approaches his second term, but I know he's going to get a Fair Tax challenge from the Republican side. And if we can make that happen, it's 2013 that we can make the Fair Tax a reality. Operator, what's the next question?
Ron Idelman, your line is open.
Good evening, thanks for taking my question.
Yes, sir.
Earlier today on Glenn Beck's radio program, he revealed how the left forum held recently at Pace University was strategizing how to subvert and sabotage our economic stability to start their own movement. Could you comment on that, please?
Well, to tell you the truth, Ron, I didn't see Glenn today, and so I don't know a lot about that group or their views. I will tell you that we're in a precarious, a precarious economic state. And if you, if folks are serious about bringing America down, you don't need to bomb us. You need to meddle in our economy, and that's exactly what's going on. We are making a series of choices now that are going to have far, far-reaching economic ramifications. The debt is the easiest one of those. By 2020, it's expected, if we continue at our current pace, that interest on the national debt will be the single largest line item in the budget. Not education, not national defense, not transportation, interest on the debt, single largest line item in the budget. And folks, this is at record-low interest rates. I mean, here's the big secret. I think Glenn talked about this a few weeks ago. You remember when the mortgage crisis started coming on and they said, "Well, it's because we sucked everybody into home buying at these really low teaser rates." And then as soon as rates went up a little bit, folks weren't able to make their mortgage payments? Well, America has been sucked into this debt at teaser rates. Forty-four percent of all the borrowing that America has done comes due in the next 52 weeks. Forty-four percent comes due in the next 52 weeks. And we're not doing a lot to change those ratios. So as it comes due, we end up borrowing more short-term money to pay back the short-term money that we've already borrowed, even though we know we have a long-term need for that money. But folks don't want to sell us that long-term debt, where it would reflect poorly in the budget for the politicians if they went after that long-term debt to get that stability. Economic collapse took the Soviet Union in 18 months. In 18 months, they went from superpower to no power with an economic collapse. And if you think for a minute that can't happen to America, you're mistaken. We are already seeing PIMCO bond funds, for example, PIMCO mutual funds, just dumped all of their government treasury bonds, sold them all. They said, "For the kind of risk that we're taking, buying American debt, we're not making nearly enough money, so we're getting out of the American debt business." Japan is going to be buying a lot less US debt going forward, because it's got issues of its own there that it's going to be spending its resources on. The largest debt holder on the planet is no longer the Chinese. It used to be the Japanese. The Chinese took over from the Japanese. It's now the Federal Reserve. Because we can't find enough people on the planet to buy our debt, we have to print extra money in the basement and come buy our own debt. And we're doing that kind of funny bookkeeping, where the Federal Reserve gets to print some money and then bring it out and buy debt with it and claim that that was somebody purchasing our debt, when really it was just us financing our debt with newly-printed money. It is a frightening, frightening time, and I tell you, I know we can get through it and come out on the other side. I know that we can. We are a nation that does spectacular things in times of crisis. The question is, do folks understand, as you're suggesting, Ron, that this really is that time of crisis, that we really are at one of those turning points in American history? And if we make the right choices, we will go back to that time of the city shining on the hills. And if we make the wrong choices, we may well go the way of the Soviet Union. And it's your and my job, because we're different here in Georgia, we're different here in the 7th District, we can make the tough choices that other folks in America might be afraid to make. And so I do believe, and I don't say this frivolously, I believe that America is counting on us and like-minded folks across this country to stand up and make the tough decisions that get this country back on track. Operator, what's the next question?
David Skiel, your line is open.
Yes, Mr. Woodall, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Skiel.
How are you tonight?
Fantastic.
Good. Hey, look, two quick comments. Number one, I had emailed you a link to the Blaze article that the gentleman before me referred to regarding the economic terrorism. So you'll have that in your office.
Thank you.
And number two, I am one of the grassroots fighters for the Fair Tax. I'm wearing a Fair Tax hat right now, and I've got a sign in my front yard. So keep on pushing, that's a great plan. I kind of like the macro versus micro approach, and our problems are so big, I think that there's really two things already in play that we can look at, and I want to find out what you think of both of them. Paul Ryan's roadmap to America includes very detailed policy proposals for entitlement reform, but the only thing I don't like about his reform is the VAT tax component of it. I want to get your take on where you stand on supporting that, because I think Mr. Ryan really has a good idea and it's time to make that bold decision and really push that. And number two, the GAO just recently released a very critical report of redundancies in programs that amount to some $300 billion that can be corrected in a relatively short period of time. And I also want to get your take on that, because that seems to be kind of low-hanging fruit and in that discretionary area where you can have an impact quickly.
Well, a couple of things on that, Mr. Skiel. Thank you first for your Fair Tax support. If you believe for a second that the American people are not still running this country, you don't need to look anywhere past the Fair Tax issue. It is a giant issue that came from outside of Washington, has taken over Washington, because one voter at the time has demanded of their representatives that they come on board and be a supporter. And if we can continue, not just on the Fair Tax, but on decision after decision after decision, to make sure the American people are running the show, instead of insiders in Washington running the show, we will come out on the better side of this issue. That GAO report that you mentioned is absolutely low-hanging fruit, and the committees that control those programs are already at work, trying to bring that legislation to the floor. And you make an excellent point. When we cut something this year, when we make a program go away that's redundant, that's not doing its job, it's not as effective as some other programs are, it's not just this year that we experience a savings. It's year after year after year, because the program's gone, it doesn't grow, and it doesn't continue to waste money. The CBO, the Congressional Budget Office, that nonpartisan office that scores all of the budget bills, said of the very first continuing resolution, they said, "We're going to score this at a billion dollars in savings for this year, but we think it's going to save $40 billion over 10 years." That that's the kind of multiplier effect you get going out into the future. So if we, the reason, it's so easy to kick the can down the road and say, "We're going to be strong and implement something today, but it's not going to go into effect for five years." Well, that's not being strong. That's kicking the can down the road. We have made the decision that we're going to start with cuts immediately, that we're going to find those redundancies and inefficiencies immediately and go after them right away, not wait for the next budget cycle. And that's going to have huge implications down the road in terms of savings. Paul Ryan's roadmap is a fantastic place. If you hadn't looked at Paul Ryan's roadmap, he's my chairman, I sit on the Budget Committee, he took a big risk and put out some very definitive ideas about where it is he would take this budget process. And on the Budget Committee, we're kind of working from that as a backdrop. But here's the thing, and if you're trying to get your mind around how big a challenge America faces, look at it through this lens. Paul Ryan is a true American patriot and a true leader, and he, in his roadmap for America, made tough, tough, tough decisions. Decisions that people have railed against as being draconian and mean-hearted and so on and so on. And he still doesn't get to a balanced budget for about 40 years. Forty years, making tough, tough, tough decisions. It has gotten so bad that the Congressional Budget Office now doesn't release its budget scoring in terms of have we reached a balanced budget. It scores in terms of have we reached a balanced budget if we pretend we don't have to pay interest on the debt, what they call primary balance. It's a nonsense number. But the problem's so big, folks are afraid to talk about it in its totality. That's the conversation America's going to have to have over the next two months as we're going through this budget process. Knowing that it's going to hurt more the more we do now, but yield larger benefits down the road, hurt less the less we do now, but hurt us terribly down the road, where is America going to come down on making some of these tough decisions? And if you're trying to make those decisions for yourself, I absolutely agree with Mr. Skiel. Take a look at Paul Ryan's roadmap. You'll find that on the Budget Committee website and on Paul Ryan's webpage, which is just paulryan.house.gov. Operator, let's get one more question.
Carrie Ford, your line is open.
Yes, thanks for taking my call, Representative Woodall.
Yes, sir.
A federal judge issued a ruling that threatened the water supply to all of Metro Atlanta. I was wondering what was your strategy to ensure that this area has an adequate water supply in the future?
Mr. Ford, if the budget is the largest issue facing the country, and I believe that it is in terms of our survival, that decision by Judge Magnuson is the most important decision regarding the survival of our community. Gwinnett County, Forsyth County, North Fulton cannot survive if that ruling stays in place. Now, Governor Deal is working very hard directly with the governors of Alabama and Florida in terms of getting some of these negotiations going. And we passed legislation in Congress that delegated the authority to the governors to work it out amongst themselves. So we didn't have to pass a bill where one state wins and another state loses. We've given the states the authority to say, "Decide for yourself and try to find a win-win scenario." And the governor just said last week, I believe it was, that he's making great progress with Alabama and believes if he can find an agreement with Alabama, it's going to make it easier to get that next agreement with Florida. The Judge Magnuson in his ruling gave us until July of next year to sort this out amongst ourselves. At the federal level, I'm pushing legislation that adds to the list of permitted uses of Lake Leoneer water, drinking supply water, for Gwinnett County. And if we can get that signed into law, that will solve the judge's issue. There's also been an appeal of the judge's issue, and what he said is, "The law doesn't actually allow the Corps of Engineers to release this water for people to drink. You can store it there to ski on, you can boat on it, you can use it for fishing, but the law doesn't actually say you can use it for drinking water." That's been an element of the appeal. The appellate judge who just heard the case the other day seemed very sympathetic to the Corps' position, that they're just in charge of water and they're trying to make the best decisions they can, and clearly drinking water for human beings ought to be a priority of theirs. So it may get sorted out in the appellate process in the courts, it may get sorted out among the state executive branch agencies, or it may get sorted out with Congress with new legislation. We are working on all three of those, because this is an issue that is absolutely too important to fail on. Failure is not an option for our community. We already lose businesses here today, because they see water uncertainty in our future, and we absolutely have to clear that out of the way and will before this deadline of July 2012 that Judge Magnuson has set down. Operator, one more question.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Brown.
Hi, how are you?
Very well.
My question is not really a question, it's more of a suggestion, and it's a minor one. How would you feel about introducing legislation that requires all employees of each branch of government, legislative, executive, and judicial, to take a pay cut based on the percentage increase of our national debt until it is resolved? Basically basing pay of all government employees in terms of making decisions on our national debt. The higher it goes, the less pay there is, the lower the debt until it's balanced, the higher it becomes. It would be drops in the bucket in terms of our national debt, I know, but it would be motivation, for members of Congress especially, to avoid legislation that increases spending and adding to our debt, and it would be a show of good faith to the American people that the government is serious about being fiscally responsible.
That raises a lot of interesting questions, Mr. Brown. Number one, I believe in those kinds of incentive programs. We've seen it in healthcare. If you add a $1 copay to a service that used to be free, it's a drop in the bucket in terms of what it does, in terms of the dollars that come in, but it substantially changes utilization of those services. If people have to pay a dollar of their own, they think, "Golly, maybe I don't need that service as much as I thought that I did," and so they don't utilize it. So I'm a big believer in getting skin in the game for folks. How we do that in the right way is tough. You know, if you're the guy who mows the grass at the United States Department of Agriculture, you don't have a lot of ability to affect the national deficit. You can try to use a more efficient lawnmower or a less efficient lawnmower, you can take fewer breaks and work harder to avoid overtime, so you don't run up the national deficit. But beyond that, you can't really do much. And so penalizing that guy, because Congress and the President are making bad decisions, that would be hard for me to do. Now, have we overcompensated federal employees in general? Now, have we overcompensated federal employees in general? I believe the answer is we have. And we have to go back, including congressional pensions, including the pension for that guy who mows the grass, and so on and so on. We have to make sure that federal benefits are in line with private sector benefits. Back in the day, when everybody had a pension benefit, it was right that the federal government had a pension benefit, because we need to be able to compete with the private sector for talented personnel. You know, we think about things like, the easiest is computer security. You know, I want the very best computer security folks on the planet working for the American intelligence community. I want them protecting our energy grid, I want them protecting our Defense Department grid, I want them protecting everything. We can't get those guys for bargain basement discount government prices. It takes top dollar to get top-notch talent like that, and I don't mind paying for that top-notch talent. It's that we ought to be paying market rates, and we're not paying market rates in the government today. We're compensating folks too much, particularly given the value of their benefits package. Government Reform and Oversight Committee has already begun working to look at those packages and to see what it is that we can change, and what it is that we can change immediately, that will start to have some budget impacts immediately. But going to the core of your point, Mr. Brown, having skin in the game critically important. But I'll tell you this, and this is going to be hard for some people to hear. If you look at Congress and you don't like the way Congress operates, go back and look at the voters who elected them. And I mean that sincerely. Congress does respond to the voters. I can't tell you how many meetings I've been in where folks said, "Rob, I want you to cut, 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 cut. We've got to get this budget balanced, we've got to make this happen." And then they'll follow me out to the parking lot after a meeting and say, "And when I said 'cut,' I meant you need to exempt these two or three programs, because these two or three programs are really important to me." There are those self-interests among the electorate. Take a look at the race in New York, Charlie Rangel, former chairman of the Ways and Means Committee. We almost threw him out of Congress for unethical behavior, almost threw him out of Congress. But his constituency in New York reelected him overwhelmingly. Congress thought he wasn't qualified to be there at all, folks in New York thought he was the very best person for the job. So voters are, in fact, in charge of this country. And if we empower them to make those decisions, I think we end up with the very best results. But will the federal government and its employees and congressmen and so on and so on be a part of the solution? Absolutely. And I said during the campaign, and it's still true, that I'm going to cut 10% off of my own budget, because I think we ought to have those kind of 10% cuts across the board. I think that's the only way to get started. We did implement a 5% across-the-board cut for Congress, but I don't think that went far enough, so I'm going to do any other 5% on my own. Operator, I think we've got time for one more question tonight.
Connie Moss, your line is open.
Good evening, Mr. Woodall.
Good evening.
My question is, do you think that Medicare should continually be cut? The budget should be cut? And my other question is, do you think the budget will be balanced this year? Will they be able to come to an agreement before legislated, before the spending is over with?
Let me take that in three parts. Will we get a balanced budget this year? The answer is absolutely not. The budget deficit this year is $1.4 trillion. The amount of money we spend on everything in the federal government that's not Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, interest on the national debt, and other mandatory spending is $1.4 trillion. In order to balance the budget tomorrow, we'd either have to double income taxes, or we'd have to cut absolutely everything, including Homeland Security, National Defense, courts, parks, the environment, transportation, everything, down to zero. That's how big the problem is. We're borrowing 40 cents of every dollar that we spend, and there is no way to cut out 40 cents overnight. But we can get started down that road, and we have to get started down that road. Does Medicare have to be part of the solution? Absolutely. It is the single fastest-growing part of the federal budget. And to say it has to be part of the solution doesn't mean that we have to hurt beneficiaries. You know, everybody thinks Medicare keeps getting cut. Medicare beneficiaries haven't been cut at all. Medicare beneficiaries, since we started talking about Medicare reform in 1995, haven't been cut at all. It's the doctors and the hospitals that keep getting cut, which makes it harder for Medicare beneficiaries to find services. But the beneficiaries themselves aren't being cut. The one exception to that is the passage of the President's Healthcare Bill. That Healthcare Bill, which was signed a year ago today, actually cut the Medicare Advantage Program out of Medicare altogether. That was a program that allowed seniors to make some choices about some extra benefits they might receive and some other benefits they might give up, so that the package better reflected their healthcare needs. The President didn't like that program, and the bill cut that program out entirely and took those healthcare plans away from seniors. But that's the first time that you've actually seen beneficiaries be cut. When we talk about Medicare cuts, we're talking about what's the best way to deliver healthcare. You know, it is. Medicare is an 80/20, old-fashioned, Blue Cross/Blue Shield system. And when I was three and four years old, back in the early 70s, we had that kind of insurance in my family. I remember folks talking about whether or not we could go to the doctor because we hadn't met our deductible, and we were going to have to pay the copay, and so on and so on. But during my working life, I've never had that kind of healthcare plan. During my working life, it's always been some sort of HMO, some sort of preferred provider organization, some sort of medical savings account. It's been a completely different model. That old-fashioned Blue Cross/Blue Shield model didn't exist in a way that made financial sense for me. That's what we're talking about when we talk about changing the way that Medicare works and making cuts to Medicare budgets. We're not necessarily talking about cutting benefits, we're talking about cutting budgets. If we're spending $10,000 a year per Medicare beneficiary, what could you do with that $10,000 that would work better for you than what we're doing with it on your behalf? We keep clamping down on providers, it's the only way to save money in the Medicare system, and there is just no way to keep providers in the system if we keep cutting them the way that they have been cut. The truth of the matter is that folks had no idea, when they created the Medicare system, how much it was going to cost. I remember the speech when Lyndon Johnson talked about how much Medicare and Medicaid would cost over the next 10 years, and he underestimated it by a factor of 10. We have to get people, and it goes back to a question someone asked earlier, we have to get people with skin in the game. And so we need to find a way to get Medicare beneficiaries involved in making their own healthcare choices, not just in terms of what they utilize, but the kinds of plans they utilize, and make them a beneficiary when they make good decisions, and ask them to pay a little more when they make worse decisions or more expensive decisions. It pains me to say that. I just can't tell you how much it pains me to say that, because I do not want the government of the United States deciding for the American people what's a good decision and what's a bad decision. What's okay and what's not okay when it comes to healthcare decisions. I do not want that to happen. But if you're going to ask the federal government to provide your healthcare services for you, and that's what Medicare does, that's what you're always going to end up with. Call the comparative effectiveness panel, call the death panel, call it rationing based on dollars and cents, call it whatever you want to call it, but it always ends up with the government making decisions about your health for you. That's a dangerous, dangerous place for this country to be. We've got a lot of ideas on the table to move those decisions back to seniors, to give folks in the 55 and under bracket some different choices for healthcare when they hit retirement age, and I believe that's where we're going to find the dollars to completely overhaul that system. But the question of, is Medicare, is reducing the Medicare budget going to be a part of the budget solution? The answer is absolutely. It cannot happen without it, and Medicare will go bankrupt without it. So we owe it to everyone involved in Medicare to get that right and make that possible. I want to thank you all for being here with me tonight and sharing in this discussion. Again, if there were easy answers, they'd have been done already. The only things that are left for you and me are the really tough questions. And I believe we can make it happen. I believe we can turn the corner on what, just in the last three years, has become a budget crisis that threatens the survival of our nation. We can absolutely turn that corner. But as I said at the very beginning, we've got four different budget conversations going on. We've got the CR, Considering Resolution Battles going on, we've got the 2012 Annual Appropriations Discussions going on, we have the debt limit discussions going on, and we have the 10-year budget discussions going on. As you read on the internet and in the newspapers and hear information, try to focus on which one of those four conversations we're having. They're all coming up incredibly quickly, and they all have a big, big impact on what the financial future of America is. I appreciate your willingness to engage on this, confront these issues with me. If you have any questions, by all means, give my office a call. Let me give you our number. It's here in Gwinnett, it's 770-232-3005. And you're welcome to call absolutely, absolutely any time. And my email address is woodall, W-O-O-D-A-L-L, at mail.house.gov. Your feedback, you're sending me links to articles that you've read that are important to you, you're sending me that information that's coming across your desk that you think's important to me, it's incredibly appreciated. And so I urge you to continue doing that if you already are, and begin doing that if you haven't already. And with that, I wish you all a fantastic evening, and we will absolutely do this again very, very soon. It's been tremendously helpful to me, and I'm grateful. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your participation. This concludes today's call. You may disconnect at this time.